This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. The time is 8:00 AM and this is the March 3rd, 2021 special session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. This is a special session. This special session is being held because we were unable to hold our February 25th meeting due to an unforeseen closure at Burr Hall for a few days last week. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference, and we ask that you please mute your devices at this time so it's not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise today, this morning, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, if you could please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger.
Great. So, we are all going to, in our own, wherever you are, we're going to rise to salute the flag, and after the, we salute the flag, we're going to have a moment of silence in honor of State Senator Jerry Cardinal, who passed away on February 20th. Senator Cardinal was a longtime resident of the 39th Legislative District, of which Allendale was a part prior to it being redistricted to the 40th. So, on behalf of the borough, my condolences, our condolences to his family. So, all please join me as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice. Great. Thank you, everyone. Is there a quick question? Very one, and thank you to State Senator Jerry Cardinal for all that he did and for his selfless service to Allendale and New Jersey. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch?
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much, Michelle, and thank you for putting this all together.
I thought you called Liz. I thought they... Okay.
So, the next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So, I'm going to request a motion to approve the following minutes. January 21st, 2021 work session as amended. Aliu was misspelled, so we're going to approve those minutes as amended.
That was me.
Thank you. January 21st, 2021, the regular session, and then the January 21st, 2021 closed session that are not for release at this time but will be released when appropriate. So, I would request a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved, Holman.
Great. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole are absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Next, I'm going to open the floor to the public for agenda items only. So, if anyone wishes to be heard on anything on the agenda, I, the only, I don't see anyone on the public other than Mark Savistano from the Green Team, so not seeing or hearing anyone, we'll close the meet, we will close that portion of the meeting. Next is resolutions. Resolution 21-87, approve application for tax exemption and financial agreement to THC Allendale Industrial Urban Renewal LLC. This resolution approves the application for tax exemption and financial agreement at 230 West Crescent and brings the borough one step closer to finalizing the sale of 220, 230. Thank you again to our team who has been working so diligently on this, especially Councilwoman Wosinski, Councilwoman Holman, Mayor Emeritus Vince Barra, Ray Wiss, and Tom Borsey, to ensure that we receive the best outcome for the borough. I invite either Amy or Ray to speak on this if either one would like to.
I think you said it all, so that's perfect for me.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next is ordinance for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2101, an ordinance for the Borough of Allendale, Bergen County, New Jersey, amending and modifying Chapter 231 Stormwater Control, Article 1, General Regulations of the Borough of Allendale. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
Mayor, did we actually make the motion to move the resolution on 21?
I apologize. That's my mistake. We need a motion and a second and a vote on that.
Great, okay. Sounds good. So, we're on 21, I'm sorry, 2101? You're 21-87. Can I please get a motion, please?
So moved.
Great. The second?
Holman.
Great. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole are absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So, now, move on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing, which is ordinance 21-01 that I briefly mentioned before. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinance.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on February 11th, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance 21-01, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, Bergen County, New Jersey, amending and modifying Chapter 231 Stormwater Control, Article 1, General Regulations of the Borough of Allendale.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. I open the floor to the, for public comments on ordinance 21-01. Not seeing anyone, I would request that a council member make a motion to move and to pass, to move to pass and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 21-01. Notice of same shall be published according to law.
Mayor, I'd like to, on behalf of the Land Use Committee and the Land Use Board, who also reviewed this and sent this back to the mayor and council with their blessing, let them move that we adopt it at this time.
Great. Councilman Sasso, thank you very much. Second?
Second, Strouch.
Councilman Strouch, thank you. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole are absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Now, just a brief, just, we're going to do a minor modification of the agenda. 21-89 and 21-90 that are on the consent agenda, we are going to approve them separately before we introduce ordinance 21-02. So, I would request a motion to take 21-89 and 21-90 off the consent agenda, so we can approve that separately now.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second, Sasso.
Thank you, Councilman Sasso. Ray, do we need a roll call on that?
That can be all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. So, now, Ray, can I go to introduction of ordinance, or do we need to now separately?
I think the motion had framed was just to remove it from the consent agenda. Now, we should have a motion to approve resolutions 21-89 and 21-90.
Great. So, now, having taken them off the consent agenda to approve them separately, we're now going to look to approve them separately. So, I would request a motion to approve 21-89 and 21-90.
So moved, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole are absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
And Mayor, just for the purpose of the minutes, the reason for taking those in the sequence we just did is ordinance 2102 incorporates the salary terms that are reflected in the MOA and the contract. So sequentially, we wanted to approve both the business terms in the MOA and the contract incorporating those business terms before you introduce the salary ordinance.
Great. And Ray, thank you for pointing that out, and I do, I don't want to give, just because we moved it around, I don't want to give short shrift to what they were. We are very happy to have reached a four-year agreement with the PBA through 2024. And so, that's, those were the two parts of the consent agenda, approved the memorandum of agreement and approved the collective bargaining agreement, PBA Local Number 217. Thank you to everyone involved, especially the Public Safety Committee led by Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole, Ray Wiss, and everyone from the PBA. So, thank you for that and for all involved. Next, we will go to introduction of ordinances. 21-02, an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance of the Borough of Allendale for the years 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024, members of the police department. And, -2103, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale County of Bergen, New Jersey approving of, no, and 21-03, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale County of Bergen, New Jersey approving a financial agreement with THC Allendale Industrial Urban Renewal LLC. So, I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinances 21-02 and 21-03, and set the hearing for March 25th, 2021, at 8:00 PM, or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved. Holman?
Amy, you're muted.
Mayor, was the date of the hearing going to be the 25th or the 11th?
Yeah.
That was my question.
And as I said, the 25th, I realized that it should be March 11th. So, let me read it again for clarity, so that there's no misunderstanding, because that was my error. Yeah, I heard, I saw you, but I didn't hear you.
Mr. Wiss, I believe that you have to have the ordinance published at least seven days prior to, to having the adoption.
That is correct. We can't get it in the paper tomorrow?
No, the earliest would be Saturday.
That was that problem, doesn't it?
I'm sorry, you know.
Oh, boy. After all that.
Okay, so it's the 25th.
So, it stays, so I'm going to read it again. So, we were, we thought that perhaps we could have, tee it up for
Yeah, the next meeting.
Adoption on the next meeting, which will be March 11th, but it needs to be in the paper. So, is it, Ray, to, should I change it to the 25th, or should I leave it to the March 11th or the first appropriate date?
No, I mean, if Michelle's saying it's a physical impossibility to get it published, then the answer is the 25th.
Okay.
Do you want to have, do you want to have a special meeting on it?
No, let's keep it the 25th.
I would say no.
Okay.
Okay. So, as I originally stated, the two ordinances, I'm going to request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinances 21-02 and 21-03, and set the hearing for March 25th, 2021, at 8:00 PM, or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Liz. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinances and conduct a roll call.
Sure. This is ordinance 21-01, an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance of the Borough of Allendale for the years 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024, for members of the Police Department. An ordinance 21-03, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale County of Bergen, New Jersey approving a financial agreement with THC Allendale Industrial Urban Renewal LLC.
So, I just
I'm sorry.
I think you said 21-01 and 21-
21-02 is an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance of the Borough of Allendale for the years 2021, 2022, 2023, and 2024, for members of the Police Department. And ordinance number 21-03, an ordinance of the Borough of Allendale County of Bergen, New Jersey approving a financial agreement with THC Allendale Industrial Urban Renewal LLC. I'm sorry.
No, no, and thank you. And there were a lot of numbers that were close. I just, for clarity purposes, want to make sure that we got it, we were right. So, I would request a motion.
I'm sorry. We need a roll call vote.
Okay.
We did a motion, right.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole are absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Next, we move to the consent agenda, part of the meeting. So, before we approve the consent agenda, I briefly want to review them since we didn't have a work session, as this is a special, a special meeting. So, 21-88, authorize emergency 2021 temporary budget appropriations. The borough is operating on a temporary budget until it is officially adopted. This resolution appropriates additional funds in our temporary budget to allow for the continuous operation of the borough until then. 21-89 and 21-90, we took out of the consent agenda and approved them separately, so I will not go into them, not discuss them here. 21-91, this is to implore Governor Murphy to expedite reinstatement of the state of New Jersey's COVID-19 vaccination hotline. I'm going to be discussing that in my mayor's report. It's, it's been a source of frustration for many people in New Jersey. We just can't seem to get the rollout. They can't seem to get the rollout. We can't seem to get the rollout done effectively, efficiently, and we are imploring him to correct this as quickly as possible, as everyone's health depends on it. So, the hotline is for many residents, especially seniors and those without online access. It's the only way for them to schedule appointments for the COVID-19 vaccine. Unfortunately, on February 10th, the full center's ability to take those reservations was halted due to apparent lack of training that resulted in mistakes in booking appointments. This resolution calls on the governor to allocate appropriate resources and training so that this hotline can again serve our community. And we discussed this at our OEM meeting yesterday, last night, and Commissioner Dillon, again, was in favor of this. So, we're all urging Governor Murphy to do the right thing and get it back on track. 21-92, authorize a refund of 2020 overpayment for 792 West Crescent Avenue. This is a routine resolution to refund a 2020, 2020 tax overpayment. Next is 21-93, approve change order, change order number two for the 2020 paving program for DNL paving. Our financial engineer has recommended a change order in our contract with DNL paving for actual costs and materials as part of the 2020 paving program. Next, 21-94, authorize 2020 budget transfers. This is also a routine resolution to transfer funds in the 2020 budget, which is permissible within the first three months of the new year. Next is 21-95, approve the February 25th, 2020 bill list. I know Amy's, right, Amy's reviewed it, Councilman O'Toole's reviewed it, I've reviewed it. So, it's here on the consent agenda. 21-96, point technical assistant, construction code office, Charlotte Zinn. We are very, very happy to welcome Charlotte Zinn as our technical assistant in our construction code office starting next Tuesday, March 9th. Our sincerest thanks to Anthony Hackett and Linda Garofalo for working hard to keep the office running so smoothly during the interim. So, many thanks to everyone for keeping us operating as efficiently as we happen. So, that is the consent agenda.
Sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry. We need a motion and a second and a roll on that.
Yep. Nope. I'm good with you there. So, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Great. Second?
Second, Strouch.
Thank you, Jim. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell and O'Toole are absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any unfinished business? No? Any, any new business? No? Okay, so let's do committee reports. Councilman O'Connell's not here. I don't know whether he gave his report to anyone else. We will continue. Councilman Sasso?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the Land Use Committee has not met since our last council meeting, but we did talk about the stormwater ordinance, which then went to the Land Use Board last week, I think it was, where we also looked at three, I think, three different applications. All were looked at favorably and approved, as was the stormwater ordinance, and sent back to the mayor and council. And our next meeting is March the 10th. And I'm very happy to see Charlotte Zinn joining the office. The timing is perfect, because as the weather gets better, so do the applications and permit requests and building stuff. So, we're going to have some things to talk about on the horizon at our next committee meeting. And one quick thing on COVID, I got a call yesterday from the Eagle Scout candidate, and with the support of his scoutmaster, his Eagle Scout project that he's considering is to, with himself and some other scouts and some other kids, as he said, to assist seniors and others that are having difficulty navigating the registration process.
That's great.
That is wonderful.
Yeah. So, I had some suggestions for him. I know we have a police officer who's a liaison to the special needs and, and our senior housing. So, possibly, I said, you could check, I'll help, I'll make the introduction, you could check with them, see if there's anywhere there that needs help. I suggested possibly a couple of open houses that could be done socially distanced and safe. As the weather gets better, maybe even outside, I was thinking about the gazebo at the library. I was even thinking, if it's okay with the chief or the ambulance corps, we could open one of the bays, and you could do it in there and keep your distance, maybe for a couple of hours. And it could be as complicated as the scouts entering the information for them, or it could be as simple, I said, as creating a database where you can, you know, it changes daily. So, here are the vaccinations that are now available as of yesterday, and here's where you could go and click and register. And, you know, he asked me, how much of a need do I think there is? I said, I'm sure there is a need, but even 65 and older folks in Allendale are pretty internet savvy and computer savvy, and if they're not, they've got nice kids like all of us here to help them. But, I still think it's a great idea. So, it's just an FYI for now.
Great. Councilman Sasso, thank you. I want to add to that, and I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate you speaking to the Eagle Scout or the potential Eagle Scout and bringing it forward. We have, as I've been mentioning, we have been discussing ways to assist the seniors with this process too. So, what I would, what I would suggest, if you want to mention it to the Eagle Scout, to the potential Eagle Scout, and also for you to help link the two together, OEM Director Mike Dillon. So, I, we've had conversations, and we do, you know, a couple of times a week about how to do something like that, and I think this is a great, great idea. So, Lincoln, Director Dillon, because I think he, we've discussed it, and he has some ideas, and I think he's a necessary, he's an essential and great link to getting this done.
Yeah, he was one of the first people I thought of. I just, this only, conversation only happened yesterday afternoon, so.
I applaud it. I think, I think it's a great idea. Good. Thank you, and thank you for your report. Councilwoman Holman, would you like to give your report?
Sure. Let's see, we've had a lot of meetings, our committee, around the water system. As I had spoken in previous meetings, we have hired Dennis Enright of NW Financial to do evaluation of the system. So, there's been a lot of, of information that has been gathered, and it's actually great just because it helps us in all the steps that we're doing around the water system to put some of this information into one place. So, that's moving forward. We've also been meeting with Ryan Skirbo, who we also approved to work with around the possibility of selling the Allendale water system. So, we've had a lot of meetings there. We are continuing to work on the RFP for the design and permitting and bidding of the PFAS treatment facility that may be necessary in the future. So, Mike Vreeland and his team have been working on some of the final details. We hope to have that actually out for bid within the next, we had hoped by the end of February, but it looks like it will be within the next week. We've had meetings with Waldwick Water. We've been speaking to other municipalities on water and the various water challenges. Actually, today, I had set up a meeting with NJDEP for Northwest Bergen Elected Officials to have a dialogue with NJDEP around, you know, some of the different parameters under which were measured, as well as future developments with water. So, it's just a great opportunity to illustrate that the Northwest Bergen communities are working together, and that we want to make sure we understand how we can best interact with NJDEP, respond to new legislation, you know, which certainly we support as far as ensuring that we have the best water to provide to all of the New Jersey residents. We also have begun to advertise that a week today at 7:00 PM, I will host the third virtual public water meeting. So, that'll be next Wednesday. And really, it's just to keep the public, since many people don't always attend the council meetings, but perhaps if we have a meeting that's focused specifically on water, we can get some additional residents just to engage and know what's going on. So, as we move forward, they have a, you know, a good level of knowledge about the water system in Allendale and the options that we're looking at for the future. The other thing which I think is important for everybody to be aware of is, as we had discussed as a council in previous meetings, that Saddle River has some large development that they will need to put in in the coming years. In our sewer system, we have an agreement, and Ray, help me if I, you know, say anything incorrectly about the agreement we have with Saddle River, I think was put in place in 1979, and there's a pass-through with the sewer system from both Saddle River and Ramsey. But Saddle River has, you know, looking forward to what they have, they are beginning to discuss with us adding additional residences onto that sewer system that passes to us. And so, as a committee, we are beginning to look at, you know, does that, do we need to change our agreement, you know, slightly? Are there things that we should be, you know, just considering as, as we move forward? So, I think that's important for the council to understand. And thank you so much to my water committee, and to, Ray has become more involved in many of the issues that we're dealing with. So, it's, it's a lot of time, and I just thank everybody for their effort and energy. And I encourage anybody on the council, as well as anybody in the public, if they have And I encourage anybody on the council as well as anybody in the public, if they have concerns or questions, to make sure they reach out to myself um, or Steve Sasso or Ari on the water committee. So that's it. Thanks.
Great, Liz, thank you. And, um, thank you not only for your report, but for all that you're, you're, you're doing. You've, you've taken, um, you've taken water, the water committee to a new level. Um, and I know you do it, it's, um, selfless, it's volunteer, um, and, but you go beyond, um, beyond again and again. Thank you for all of your work.
Any of you on this, uh, on the council would do the same. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Wozinski, would you like to give your report?
Sure, I also have Matt's. So would you like me to give his first?
Um, sure.
Um, okay, from that, he says, um, this morning, we are approving the addendum to the temporary budget, which was introduced at the reorg meeting. This is a typical thing that we do to add funds to the temporary budget until we finalize the annual budget. We continue to forge ahead with the budget process and we are at the point where we'll be directing departments to start making cuts. We have asked all departments to come in with their best budget, but it is not enough. So we'll be making some very difficult decisions. It's not where we want to be, but, uh, something that we are, we will have to deal with. The annual audit process has begun with the early stages currently underway. The bulk of the process will happen later this year. Finally, we have been tending to some personnel issues, including the PBA contract that we are approving today. And I can attest that the budget has been definitely challenging this year for sure. You know, we, we're getting hit on all ends, revenue as well as expenses going up. So, um, we are trying to sharpen our pencils and do our best to, to bring it to a reasonable level, but we still have a lot of work to do. So.
Agreed.
And my, my report, uh, I'll just, I want to really thank everybody, uh, for the, uh, efforts to get this financial agreement on the agenda today. The financial agreement is something we've been talking about since the very beginning of time. Um, it's a very important document as well as many other important documents that we need, uh, in order to close on two thirty West Crescent. As you know, we bought this property two years ago and we have been through, um, uh, up and down process, uh, to get to, to this point. There is light at the end of the tunnel, but it was not with, uh, a lot of effort from the team. The lawyers especially Ray and Tom, you know, a- and Vince Barr, these documents that we need to, uh, go through are not just simple documents at all. They are very large documents and they all have, uh, many moving parts. So we had several meetings in the past couple of weeks. We've had two all hands meetings with the team from Hampshire and the Allen Dell team. And, um, we pulled everything together and we were able to get it, um, on this agenda, which is, uh, which is huge. It's a big win for Allen Dell. So we're forging ahead. There's lots more to come. So I just wanted to really thank everybody for dealing with all of the emails and charts and, and graphs and things like that to get to this point. So I'm very appreciative of everybody and I know it was a heavy lift. Um, and we did it. So thanks to everybody. And that's, that's pretty much it for my report.
Great. Amy, thank you. As, um, as we, as I, as we all say throughout, but it bears repeating again today. Thank you for, um, for all of your work in pushing this through. It hasn't been easy and it's, in fact, it's been difficult many, many times. But you've, um, you've never let your, 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 your foot off the gas pedal for the benefit of Allen Dell. Thank you very much for all of your efforts. Councilman Strouch, would you like to give your report?
Uh, sure. Thank you, Mayor Bernstein. Uh, DPW, um, you know, after having a couple of substantial snowfalls, um, you know, we've hopefully gotten through the end of this winter season. Hopefully I'm not shooting myself in my foot. But, um, the, the snow removal was taxing on our, uh, staff and resources. Fortunately, uh, we have, um, for many years now worked with independent contractors to supplement our force. And the, uh, OnQ and other contractors have done what I think is a, uh, stellar job in, in helping, uh, get Allen Dell's road paved and sidewalks cleared in a timely manner. Tree removal has been a big, uh, part. A lot of trees have come down, uh, in the past couple of months. Um, and the, um, the, the shade tree request, uh, for twenty twenty one, uh, is restarted today. So people looking for shade tree work, uh, can go to the Borough website and, uh, fill out an application. We're getting ready to start the spring cleanup, um, and, uh, the mulching hopefully, uh, will be done by the, uh, end of the month at the various, uh, borough properties. And, uh, believe it or not, a po- a pothole patching is gonna start next week. You know, we, we definitely develop some winter potholes, uh, through the process. And of course, as it was mentioned earlier in this meeting, the, uh, twenty twenty one repaving, uh, contract, um, is, uh, is coming together. So it's, you know, it's always busy at the DPW and I want to thank everybody on the DPW team for all they do. And, uh, I'll end my report there. Thank you, Ari.
Great, Jim, thank you very much for all of your work. Um, much, much appreciated. Uh, for my report, COVID nineteen, um, remain, continues to be the most pressing issue for, for Allen Dell and for Bergen County. And Bergen County, um, OEM continues to meet, we meet weekly, we often, uh, we have discussions, uh, and communications, um, in between. Um, and it's, from my point of view, it's, it, it's number one on the agenda. Bergen County is in the very high risk category for COVID nineteen. You can look on the COVID, uh, appropriate website, you can see the numbers. Um, and the numbers are slightly on the rise in Allen Dell. We don't know whether it's new variant, which is thought to, one of the new variants, which is thought to be, perhaps less life threatening, but in none- nonetheless, the numbers are slightly on the rise. So as we've been saying this from day one, and it's so important, especially now since we're so close to hopefully seeing this pandemic behind us, we need to continue wearing masks even outdoors, maintaining a social distance and washing our hands. Um, as we get to warmer weather and people are gonna be more apt to be outside, we just, we're going to continue to implore the residents to do the right thing. That's the only way that we can beat this. As mentioned before, uh, we continue to reach out to the county to offer Allen Dell as a distribution site for the vaccine. Unfortunately, the county has not accepted our offer yet, but we will continue our efforts to look into other avenues to help our residents get access to, uh, the vaccines. Everyone, all, everyone in the borough is encouraged to visit, uh, the COVID nineteen information hub on our website at www.alandell nj.gov to get the most up to date information on the pandemic and a complete list of vaccination locations. My, uh, heartfelt thanks to John Gill for keeping that tab active, um, between John and Tyler. Um, we try to keep that as current and active as possible. Thank you to both of you. As I mentioned before, um, last week, in an abundance of caution, our Borough Hall was closed for two days due to some potential exposures. Our Borough Hall staff worked remotely during that time. Uh, thankfully, I'm happy to report everyone is healthy and the borough has reopened, but I cannot stress enough to everyone how important it is that we all remain vigilant. On that point, I want to, special thanks to, uh, Ron Kishner, our Director of Operations and Administrative Office, uh, officer who immediately went in to, um, to the, took the appropriate steps on behalf of the borough for the benefit and safety of our employees and our residents. And everyone, everyone was on board and everyone helped. Um, and we were all in, in agreement, but, uh, to Ron, who paused, who immediately went in, no pause, grace under pressure, um, calm, cool and collected the whole way. So Ron, um, I know you don't take, uh, that kind of thanks, um, willingly and you'll shrug it off. But, uh, behalf of all of us, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Our nation received more encouraging news recently that the Johnson and Johnson, uh, the Jonathan Johnston has been given approvals uh, for their COVID nineteen vaccinations to begin being administered. Uh, we hopeful that these vaccines will make their way to New Jersey's and Allen Dell's residents soon. Um, and that is it for my report. Um, uh, staff reports, Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the, uh, items that we've been involved in have been referred to in council committee reports were reflected on the agenda. Most particularly, uh, we've been keeping busy on two twenty, two thirty with Councilwoman Wozinski's committee. Uh, the water utility issues that Councilman Holman referenced with Mr. Kishner on certain personnel and administrative matters. And obviously with the, uh, Public Safety Committee and bringing the closure of the PBA contract, which I think is, uh, you know, a great benefit to both the borough and the police department in, uh, um, you know, in having an agreement, uh, extending several years forward. That's about it, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Michelle?
Uh, thank you. Um, we're just busy processing, um, pet licenses still and gearing up for, uh, spring uh, compost permits and, um, hopefully Crestwood registrations.
Great, thank you. And, um, I, you too, I know you're, you, you conveniently, you won't have the camera on you and we, you won't, you, we won't to, to see you blush, but, um, what you've been doing, um, under trying circumstances, um, phenomenal. And, um, so it, it just, I, I know you don't like the, um, the attention, but it's, it's well warranted and deserved and we all thank you. Thank you for that. Liz, I'm not sure if Liz is on? Okay, um, but, uh, so she may not be on, but, uh, Councilman O'Toole's.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor? Yes, I am on. Sorry, I was on mute.
That's okay.
I just, I just wanted to report that, um, the finance, there's nobody physically in the finance and tax department, but we are always available, um, by phone or email. Um, and the office should be back open by, on Monday.
Thank you and thank you for for all of your work, for all of your hard work through this very trying, trying time. Very much appreciated on behalf of all of us. Ron?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Morning, Dad.
Operations and Administrative Officer, a- anything like?
Yeah, unfortunately, I, you've noticed I've been a little distracted. Um, I have another water main break on Myrtle by High Street. Sue has canceled, uh, another job they had. Must be my charming personality. And they'll be there by nine thirty. Uh, I'm just trying to reach the police to get an officer for traffic. We probably do without, but it is a busy street in Myrtle, so we will, um, wait, we will start the crew until the police get, get us a traffic control officer. Uh, other than that, uh, a lot of stuff was covered. Um, the guys are, um, the, the mulch and the spring cleanup, as I believe Councilman Strauss said, will be starting by the end of the month. Uh, two shade trees, one on Stone Fence and one on Skylar will start the shade tree removal process today. Um, got a couple of bids, uh, between a couple of local, uh, tree companies and David Tree won, uh, both jobs, so that's going along well. Councilwoman Holman knows we, uh, Lane has done a great, Lane's actually off today. So a little extra pressure on the, the break here today, but, uh, um, he did a great job. And Liz knows that he, and Liz is big help with putting the financing place. We ordered our valves, our gaskets, our hydrants, all for, hopefully for the whole year of twenty twenty one, but that's probably wishful thinking, but, um, we have, we put a lot of orders in for a lot of the supplies and material that we need that we keep across the, uh, parking lot here. Lane did a great job with that. And again, as you said, I just want to thank, uh, all my coworkers, uh, for their understanding, care for each other. I do want to thank you, Mayor, uh, not, I guess I'm separating, uh, Ray, uh, Mr. Wiz, Amy and Liz, they were involved because we were on other calls last Friday. And their understanding and, uh, compassion for our, our employees was, uh, well appreciated by, by me and the rest of the staff. They, uh, you know, I'm sure everybody else, all the councilmen would have been the same way, but they got caught right up in it when we were dealing with other things on Friday, Thursday, and, uh, that they really, uh, it's, it's appreciated, the concern they showed for the employees. And, uh, we got through it and everything's nice and clean over at Borough Hall. And I'll let you guys go so you can go on to your paying jobs and all that good stuff for the day. Thank you.
Great, Ron, thank you. Great, thank you and thank you for all your work. We're, uh, public comment, so I will open the floor to the public on any matter. So is there anyone, uh, from the public who wishes to be heard at this time?
Good morning, Mayor, Mark Salvastano.
Good morning, Mark. How are you today?
I'm doing well and I, I hope I'm coming through clearly because I've been having some problem with my connection this morning.
It is clear. So, uh, state your name and address for the record and then, um, I open the meeting to, into you.
Okay, uh, Mark Salvastano from twenty two Vreeland Place. Uh, I just wanted to address, uh, the comments from Liz. Uh, we did have a, a brief exchange through email, but, uh, I was unable to get a, an answer to my question, so I'll bring it up here. Uh, thank you, Liz. I did take time to listen to your two presentations that I had missed and they were informative. But my concern is what you mean by selling the Allen Dell Water System? If that includes selling the rights to the water, uh, in our wells? Or, uh, that's coming from, uh, any of the reservoirs?
Yeah, so I, I think, um, what we are trying to do with the Allen Dell Water Committee is try to say, what are the options as we move forward with Allen Dell, with the Allen Dell Water Wells included? And in the presentation, I think what I tried to define is that I think there are three avenues that we can go down. One is to stay the course where we are, have an operations and management, continue to own, uh, the system as we do now. But we have currently Suez, uh, operating and managing it. And, and some of the challenges with that is that it's an, you know, we, we work on a, on a, our own budget. And, um, there's lots of infrastructure that needs to be, uh, consistently maintained, which is an expense for a small municipality, as well as future legislation and current legislation that may or may not impact. And that's where the PFAS treatment plant, that we did a feasibility study and the cost is to implement this PFAS treatment, uh, plant would be somewhere between, you know, I'm gonna say an average of two point eight million dollars to build the facility. And, um, that, and that's, you know, that's for today. Um, and there's going to be costs moving forward and water is an expensive, an important resource. So how is, how are Allen Dell residents best served? You know, should we as a municipality keep it, invest that money, continue to have a relationship with an operations and management, um, group? And I will say that, you know, as Ron spoke earlier, Ron spends a tremendous amount of time. Lane has been unbelievable and, you know, myself as a volunteer, I, I've been working many hours, uh, each week, managing that operations and management and our water moving forward. So is that the best? Well, that's one of the options. The second option from, you know, in easy to identify is what many municipalities have done historically and currently. And that is to not own and to sell and it would, you know, owning the, the water rights, the wells is something that could be a part of some sale, um, depending on whether or not a, a company would want to own those wells or supply Allen Dell water using, you know, selling our system. So that's an option that I believe as an elected official with the water committee, we need to pursue to understand what would that mean? What would the value be? How would that move forward? What are the parameters? So that's, you know, to answer your question specifically about the system, it would be to sell whatever components of the Allen Dell Water System would be desirable to the entity that would, at that point, I'm gonna say simply, and it's never simple, but like Rockland Electric, PSENG would supply our community that has water hookups with water. And then there's the third component that our team has also spent a tremendous amount of time on, and that is trying to define the something else. And what does that look like? Can we, you know, better interconnect, um, both physically as well as through resources with other wa- you know, municipal water utilities? Or, you know, uh, through other, you know, water companies. So it's, it's, it's a lot, Mark, but I, and I'd hope that's why the, the answer to your question and what are we doing? Is I think it is important that we explore selling the system because to do nothing, I think would be irresponsible. And, um, so that's what we're doing. We, we will, we're putting together a, um, request. It's, it's definitely legalese that Ray has spent a lot of time on. If you, um, heard, we had retained Ryan Skirbo from Decoitus, who has worked on other sales of both water and sewer systems, um, to really try to help us navigate that particular option. And that doesn't mean that we would complete the sale and certainly, uh, our whole team and everybody on the council agrees that we would not pursue a, a sale without going to public referendum at this time. There is a, a way to do that. It's a whip up procedure. But that's more for com- uh, very, very distressed water systems.
And Liz, if I can supplement your response, um, I think at least at the committee level.
Mark, I think at least at the committee level, the committee is almost posing to itself the same inquiry that you just posed, assessing all viable options, seeing what those options would mean in terms of the delivery of the product of water, the economics associated with the various options. So really, the committee is now assessing the very question that you posed. What, as Liz just explained, what are the viable options? What do they mean in terms of delivery of service? What do they mean in terms of the overall economic welfare of the utility in the borough? So it's really, you know, an assessment of multiple options at this point in time, which could include a sale of a utility, you know, ultimately. But again, there would be public input on that.
Well, I just wanted to be clear about my question. And I wasn't questioning selling the infrastructure. My question was very specific to the sale of the water itself. And that's what raises concern. So I understand why you would want to economically sell the infrastructure. But if it includes the sale of the water, then you addressed what my next question was. Will it go to referendum so that the public can speak out? Because I understand that Ramsey disqualified that possibility through referendum.
Yes.
And that's, that's the only concern I have. I think it's a mistake, I can say that upfront, to sell that resource. And I'm glad we'll have an opportunity to speak about it further when you have some reports specific to how you're going to proceed.
So Mark, I think, you know, that the what would be sold is yet to be defined.
I understand. It's just, I wanted to know if that was being considered. And you've answered that question. So thank you. The other thing that I would like to speak about very briefly is the initial meeting of the Green Team that was reestablished. Jim and Ed and Carlton Frost were part of that meeting yesterday and went exceptionally well. And we agreed to move forward and have meetings every month until we decide we don't need them to be so frequent. Following that meeting, I was part of a Bergen Hub meeting that discussed specifically Styrofoam. And what I see that Ron has disappeared from his chair, at least, hopefully he can hear. We're going to be reaching out to all of the DPW managers and the recycling coordinators in every municipality in Bergen County and ask them for their input on how to proceed regionally with processing Styrofoam so that it remains economically viable to smaller municipalities, but also accomplishes the goal of getting it out of the way. So I'm glad to report that progress. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for supporting and stating the Green Team and the efforts that we're making.
Great. And thank you. Thank you to you for all of your efforts. I know it's near and dear to your heart and you're doing a yeoman's task for the benefit of Allendale. Truly appreciate it. Thank you. Open the floor to the public on anyone else who wishes to be heard at this time? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the meeting to the public. And we're reaching the end of the special session. So I would request a motion to adjourn this special session.
So move, Strauss.
The second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Everyone, thank you very much. Michelle, thank you for all your hard work to get it done. Ray, thank you for the guidance. Everyone, have a great day.
Bye bye.